I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the board members, please.
Augustineelli.
Here.
Robertson.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Zine.
Here.
Uli.
Here.
Begood.
Here.
And Fudge.
Here.
All right, first item on the agenda, public comment. Anybody wishing to make any public comment regarding anything on the agenda tonight, feel free to step up to the podium and say a piece. With no one rushing to the podium, we'll move past that item on to review and approval of the agenda and conflicts of interest.
I'll make the motion to approve the agendas listed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John.
Staff is just requesting if the planning commission would consider under other business to look at a calendar change for your study session scheduled for October 22nd.
So, under item nine, we're going to have a consideration of an October meeting schedule change.
Correct.
And I apologize, you said something to me about that, and I didn't jump right up there and add that in. So, Pat?
Yeah, I'll make the motion with the correction of the October meeting change.
Support.
All right, motion by Klein, support by Augustineelli. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same. Motion passes. Let's take a look at the minutes from June 25th, 2025.
I'll make the motion. Will you accept the minutes?
Support. Motion by Augustineelli, support by Fudge. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same. Motion passes. We're on to reports. Anything from the township board, Molly?
No.
Oh, did I skip correspondence? Tried to push, push.
There is none.
There is none, no.
Wow. Geez, I already knew that. All right, Molly, anything from the board?
Well, just an interesting couple of things. YMCA is doing a big expansion, and they just have so many people at both locations, down at the river and also over here on Silver Lake. So, there's that. And then Supervisor says that the water leases in the area are in place. He's still working on the commons deal, and the city is reviewing easements for water. So, that's come along too.
Great. Are you familiar with any of the details of what the expansion of YMCA is doing?
Well, they're going south, and so, I don't know.
We actually had a, earlier this week, we had a meeting with their engineer, so we can probably expect the application, because that's a special use permit at the Silver Lake facility. So, they're looking to expand that, and we'll expect them to submit in August for the September meeting for the planning commission, at least on.
They're looking at indoor basketball and running, second floor track.
Sounds like part of the original plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a build out another phase of the original plan, probably slightly tweaked. So, probably some amendment of some kind that we're expecting an application.
Would there be any, supposed to be a topic for future discussion, but would any members of the YMCA, would that present a conflict of interest for anyone?
No.
Wouldn't think so, but.
I don't think so.
All right. Moving on, any planning commissioner comments, zoning board of appeals?
No meeting this month, thank you.
Parks and Recreation has not met. About the joint planning commission?
I think we're meeting next week, although I haven't heard.
Yes, I talked to Sean Winter at the city today. They'll be sending the packets out on Friday. Not a lot on the agenda, but just so you know, too, we had talked about relocating the meeting out to building 50, but the room, meeting room was not available. So, we do plan on meeting here next Wednesday at 5:15.
All right. Well, staff report. What do you guys have to say?
It's in the packet. We don't have really much to add. We've been doing quite a few administrative reviews, which are still kind of in the mix right now.
Yeah, that's pretty much, everything's written. The board will have, just prior to your study session, they'll have the public hearings for the zoning ordinance text amendment that the planning commission sent them, and then the rezoning on Hammond for the Scusso property. So, those will be at the board on the 22nd. And then we did attend the zoning atlas meeting. I think we put that as an agenda item for the study session in a couple of weeks, more of a breakdown of that. So, expect that in a couple of weeks for more details.
Very good. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business and start off with item A, PD 2025-63, Lake Point Plan Unit Development, Major Amendment, Finding Effect.
All right. So, this is the third meeting that the planning commission has seen this, considering findings of fact, after looking at introduction and public hearing, public hearings last month for Lake Point PUD, property on Ocala Drive. They're proposing two multifamily residential buildings, 24 total dwelling units, 14 unit, a 10 unit. It would be a major amendment to the Lake Point Plan Unit Development. As you've seen before, they've included the original layout and what they're proposing. Originally, there was going to be office here. There is multifamily elsewhere in this PUD, so it sort of matches and is consistent with other uses elsewhere within the PUD, and is roughly in the same footprint, actually a little bit less, since they're including a substantial amount of underground or under the building parking. Couple of things I want to mention from the previous one, and I think they had actually supplied some of this material last month right before the meeting. So, they actually had submitted some additional materials, but lighting that clarified that the fixtures will be, meet the color temperature standard, which was a detail they wanted. They added details for the bike racks. They submitted the escrow for storm waters, so Gordy Fraser, township engineer, is in the middle of reviewing the details of that. But otherwise, the draft findings of fact are presented for your consideration. And we included, we had received previously the two letters from the watershed center. We did not receive one for this month, but they had referenced our supplemental shoreline regulation, the riparian vegetative buffers. So, the initial consideration that was in the previous report, and this, that is actually included as part of the findings of fact, along with the criteria for any major amendment to a PUD, since that was part of this consideration. But yeah, otherwise, the draft findings are for the commissioners' consideration.
Questions, concerns from the commissioners?
Looked to me like they were all met. So, unless there's any different views, I would make the recommended motion that findings of fact for application PUD 1987-02-M submitted by SPPEC Holdings LLC for a major amendment to the Lake Point Plan Unit Development to construct two buildings with 24 multifamily dwelling units at parcel 0521200200 be adopted.
Support. All right, we have a motion by Racine, support by Robertson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same. Motion passes. And we have one more motion with regard to the recommended action, and recommendation for approval.
I can make that motion too, if you want, the application PUD 1987-02-M submitted by SPPEC Holdings LLC for a major amendment to the Lake Point Plan Unit Development to construct two buildings with 24 multifamily dwelling units at parcel 0521200200 be recommended for approval to the township board, subject to the following conditions, 1 through 3, that are listed in Planning Department Report 2025-63.
Support. Motion by Racine, support by Robertson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same. Motion passes.
All right, it's going to be introduced to the board in a couple of weeks as well, and they will set up a public hearing.
Very good. All right, next on the agenda, item B, PD 2025-65, High Tops Bar Restaurant Nightclub Site Plan Review Update.
Before I kind of go just do a little overview, I just want to note that we're looking at not including application forms in the meeting packets. The township has a new website, and it's ADA compliant, and so that means it's completely readable. So, we've had some instances where emails have, bogus emails have been sent on our behalf to some of the applicants. So, basically, what's happening is these like AI bots are going through and actually reading our packets and understanding what's going on, and sending out notices to people with PDF attachments, trying to get them to open. So, we found out if we eliminate anything that references an email would probably be a good idea. So, we'll have the application forms on file, so if anybody wants to read them, they're available. It's just that we will not put them in the packet, because these packets go online as well. So, that's kind of our way to at least deal with the issue right now. We had these two instances where that occurred, so.
Is there, I'm trying to think, is there information in the application that's important to the planning commission's process of review?
Not really. I mean, we just stated in there, because it shows it has the signatures from the applicants, the owners, and so forth. We typically restate a lot of the data and any information on there in our reports. So, that's, we thought it would just be easy just to kind of put those on file.
And as part of our completeness reviews, we can make sure all of those things were completed without supplying that sensitive information, yeah.
I mean, because the alternative might be to just black out the, that information from the document that gets included in the packet. Although, I'm perfectly happy if there's no reason for us to have that paper, that it get, it's paper reduction.
It's a little bit paper reduction. That's what we kind of figured, just be easy enough just to say, we don't include, for some reason, we miss it and don't black it out, or something like that, so.
Appreciate the decision and your recommendation and the discussion.
And also, if anyone does receive an email like that, ours should always be @GarfieldMI.gov. If you hover over and it's not, let us know. We reported those to our IT company, so they're keeping track of that as well.
So, this is a site plan review for High Tops Bar Restaurant and Nightclub. So, this is, was introduced previously to the planning commission on May 14th, and it was tabled, the application was tabled for more information regarding sound and security on the site. So, we did receive some information from the applicant. Specifically, there's an acoustical services proposal from Robert Anderson Group Incorporated, and then there's also an analysis and recommendations from STT Security. I see the applicant's here. I was thinking it would probably be more appropriate for him to review those with you. He also did provide kind of an updated narrative regarding his proposal. Do you want to hear from the applicant?
Let the applicant come up and...
Oh, please. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Philip Beeler, 7525 Cedaron Road. So, I did, do you want me to just go through this then?
Yeah.
So, I did consult with STT Security. They came up, met me on site. We went through the plans and walked around the building. I asked him basically the best way to route people to less impact in the neighborhood and the rear of the building. We went through a lot of stuff as far as signs and security per event. He did recommend if I had anything significant at the venue to, at 10 o'clock, have an actual staff member stand at the door to ensure nobody went out the back. He did recommend, though, that the employees did park in the back. He said it was a safer thing, and that they weren't, they shouldn't be mingling with the public outside, crossing paths. It's just one of his recommendations. I did recommend a lockout doors, which he said I can do them, but it wasn't a recommendation on his part. I guess I could put some policies in place as far as basically if an employee leaves the building, they have to exit the premises. They can't hang out in the parking lot. I walked the place, and the best route to exit was along the building on the rear of the Sears, eliminate sound from vehicles, headlights, direct out to South Airport. I also retained Robert Anderson Group, that's an acoustic engineer for the sound of the building. They basically do a computer-generated model, and then they just measured the sound levels from that. So, since STT Security recommended staff park in the back, I had him, was having him do a parking lot sound study. He pulled it up on aerial, and it sounded like there wasn't any concern, but at this point, I just had him do it anyway. The results of the building readings are supposed to be done, I believe, the 11th, to see if I needed to do anything to the building or not. I have no problems putting in lockout doors at 10. I have no problem with the security being out back. All these recommendations are, were fine. If something comes up to where employee parking isn't recommended in the back, the sound that came back, I would find it designated parking in the front. If the sound study shows that the building needs some rehabbing, I would do everything to take care of that issue. At the end of the day, the real sound testing can't be done until the building's done. There's no way to do it until it's done. So, the only recommendation I have with, you know, not agreeing on handshake is I could have a signed affidavit, basically, that I will take care of anything that Robert Anderson Group recommends to ensure the sound leave the building, and I could put money in escrow account just for that issue. I came up with probably around $50,000 in escrow, but I could put 100 in there, just to know that whatever sound issues need to be done in the building are guaranteed to be done.
I have a question for you. So, there's no way that they can go into that space?
It's not built.
There's more walls?
Well, it's empty right now, so the sound dissipates more. So, when it's enclosed and, once it's built and enclosed, it's going to have a different sound. Because I was actually going to have a company come in with sound, but the same, the sound would be lighter coming out if I didn't have any walls in there, because it's not condensed. So, they have to do a model with my, to my blueprint.
Yeah, so, right now, this is a former Yonkers store, so it's pretty much wide open. Also, a quarter of this is going to be for the Dog Park and Cafe, the Two Brothers, which is going to be kind of the, the one corner of it, and then this would be the remaining three quarters of it.
Well, the big issue has been the sound there, and you hate to build it and then test the sound.
Well, they have the testing to recommend what I need, and there's always stuff you can add.
Okay.
But there's still a real testing at the end to find out if I do need anything or not.
Anything more, and then you're willing to make whatever changes you need to make?
Yeah, I'm willing to put the money in the account to ensure that they do get taken care of, too. I don't know of any other way to guarantee something like that.
So, there is a, you know, there is a process when site plan is approved. They're issued a land use permit. They, they go through the building permit process, and then they still at some, at some point need a certificate of occupancy. So, it seems like that might be an appropriate time to have it tested before a certificate of occupancy is issued. If there are any issues with that, I mean, it could be all reported back to the planning commission and revisited. So, that might be one way, because at that point, it would essentially be built out when they're getting their CVO. So, that might be something to consider.
And we'll have an opportunity to look at that report.
Yes, all of them. You can, I'll send them all over.
So, this is not how I'm familiar, and I'm not, I've done anything like this before. The closest thing I've, I'm civil engineer. The closest thing I've had is being a participant in a design team that did a performance hall for a high school downstate. And the architects worked very closely with acoustical engineers who designed the space, and I'm familiar with similar teams who have retrofitted spaces, and have done the design work in the planning to maximize and then model the resulting outcome. You know, in the case of a performance space, it's to maximize the value of the sound within the performance space.
Correct.
In this case, I would expect more, something personally, I don't know what everybody else might expect, but something more along the lines of an architect and a sound engineer working together and preparing a set of construction documents that purport to, based on the existing acoustical properties of the structure, they're going to enhance the acoustical dampening properties by doing this thing, that thing, and the other thing. And it sounds like you're well on the way with a, with analysis being.
My architect can put it on paper, but she's not a sound architect when I call. It was, she can put whatever he wants on the plans, but he is going to do, on his report, he's actually going to give the report. He's going to give what needs to be done to make it work and a cost. Everything's going to be on that report.
And I understand that, but to me, that's the most important aspect of the plan that you're putting forth. And, and I, what I gather you asking is, I'll, you're saying, I'll do everything he tells me to do, but I want you to approve my plan contingent upon me doing everything he tells me to do.
Yes, I'm lost on...
Are you, are you suggesting you'll come back to us with, and maybe bring the acoustical engineer with you, and, or are we just going to get a report while you're under construction?
Well, no. So, the report will be in a couple of days.
Okay.
What he puts on, his recommendations, because something's, it's got to go through with the building, if you're going to do something. There were some recommendations. There's a different couple I've talked to. One did the Phil Harmonics, but they live in Pittsburgh. I couldn't afford them to come here, but if, he gives me a list of stuff I need to do and how to install it. So, this kind of would be like an architect, because he would have my plan and put him to the plan, right? I mean, it's a little backwards, but it's still at the same at the end.
So, we're just looking forward, then, to getting that plan, and the architect's changes, and we'll get a chance to review the completeness of this before you're seeking our approval.
Well, I mean, I'd like to get approval at some point with, you know, I guess whatever you recommend. I mean, I'm kind of just trying to take care of everything I can with, you know, with giving you certainty to do it. And I don't know how to do that other than, I feel the acoustic engineer is kind of the important part. If you want it on the plan, if that's the deciding, the factors to actually have it on the plan, then I guess I have to do that. I guess I don't understand, unless I'm not understanding something.
Yeah, so, Molly? I was just going to suggest, I think that's what our recommendation was. Like, I think we need to, you know, you know, it's good that it looks like they've got somebody that, you know, understands what these kind of issues and what's needed. We just wanted to, we were suggesting in our recommendation that that be brought to the planning commission so that you actually see that and see how it's going to be, what are the design elements that would be into that, particularly the interior, and so that that can be shown, so that you have some sense of what is to be expected to that. Sorry.
Molly?
No, it just, it sounds to me like you're, you have your acoustic guy that's going to work with your architect, and they'll do whatever.
Well, I don't know if she's, he's working with the architect. My architect didn't do anything with sound, so, but he, yeah.
He'll make the recommendations for what she needs to put in there, and if he says, put a wall here.
Correct.
Put sound deadening on it, then she can probably put those on the plans if...
Yes.
Yeah.
John?
I'm glad to hear that you're dealing with a sound engineer that apparently knows what they're doing, and that's encouraging. And we ask you to help us with that aspect of things. And it sounds like staff is thinking, we're going to get to see that recommendation. And I guess you're going to have it here in a couple of days. We're not going to be here for another couple of weeks. But one thought, this is more of a question for staff, I guess. I don't know that anybody on this body has subject matter expertise in acoustical sound stuff, so I could easily be snowed by whatever some sound engineer says, and I may not catch stuff. Or would it not be wise for the township to plan on having some sound expert of the township's choosing take a look at this report, ideally before we consider it, so we'll then have the Robert Anderson report, plus whatever comments there might be about, about somebody of the township's choosing. And I realize I'm spending some township money doing that, but it's a pretty big project, and...
Well, we've done that before with like, oh, like traffic impact reports, where we've done like a peer review. So, where they've supplied it, and actually, the applicants provided an escrow to cover that cost, so that it is, it's basically essentially getting another opinion, a second opinion on it. So, that could be something we have done in the past.
I'd feel better, I guess, if we did that, just because I have no negative vibes whatsoever about the sound person that Philip's chosen, but I'd feel that much better if somebody that the township chooses vets that same thing and tells us, yep, it looks great, or if there's issues, points them out to us.
Just send me the bill.
I will say, I don't, you know, getting another engineer to review an engineer's traffic impact studies, one thing. Sound is, I mean, just from our standpoint, too, I don't know if we, I mean, certainly we'll look into it, but I don't know if we have understanding of, you know, who's...
It's a different type of sound, too. It's a different level of sound, and the deepness of the sound has to be done with an acoustic engineer, I think.
Right. I'm just saying, I don't, I'm, I'm not, I don't know any sound. I mean, we can look into it, but I mean, and we'll do our best, but I just wanted to know, you know, let you know that.
It strikes me as, and I think it's a great point, John. It strikes me as the most important issue that we need you to address thoroughly. Otherwise, frankly, and this is what I'd seen happen before with similar issues, where you, it helps to have an applicant prepare a thorough sound study and thorough design with respect to the sound study, and then to have a third party take another look at it, because it closes the loop. Frankly, it's the one, one of the things, I think, the most controversial aspect of what you're proposing to do in this location, as has been brought to our attention by the public hearing at these meetings. And I think the last thing we want, or frankly, I think you want, is for them to, you know, step forward and say, there's, we haven't been thorough, or to poke holes in the sound study or the design. So, if we could close that. And I've seen other projects get, in other communities, get approved and then get taken to court on sound issues. So, you know, I think, again, I think it's a great suggestion, John. So, you know, I think, again, I think it's a great suggestion, John.
Uh, yeah, nothing personal and nothing having to do with your project. Just, I guess, fifty years of lifetime experience in the certain business and I get a lot kinda cynical uh, when somebody retains somebody to do something, they usually get what they are paying for. But maybe we need to make sure that we buy it. Not just in this case, but in pretty much any case where we're dealing with somebody's, uh, somebody's expert. Uh, and if I'm understanding correctly, that some of the paperwork has maybe been changed, this twelve AM is now back to ten PM.
Well, it was recommended to do ten and ten doesn't matter.
Yeah, and, and so the so-called lockout door would kick in at ten o'clock and nobody's coming in after ten o'clock.
No.
Yeah. And there, I know we've got a noise ordinance, I looked at it earlier. So even when the employees leave, I guess we'd have to make sure that somehow the employees are aware of the fact that they gotta be pretty quiet on the way out.
Under the noise, that's correct.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
A bear to enforce, but not having the public going out there would be fantastic. But even employees, they better be quiet if it's two in the morning and somebody's trying to sleep.
Molly, you had something to say?
Well, just, you, you staff is gonna look for somebody who can review, is that, I know where we're headed.
Yeah, well, like, what we'll probably do is we'll, we'll send Phil an escrow application, which we have in there. And we do this for stormwater reviews, for utility reviews, all kinds of things. Um, and then we'll require an escrow setup. He'll send a check with that application form that goes into an escrow account that will be used for, uh, paying for that, uh, third party to review the, the sound, uh, study. I think we could do that as soon as that first, that study is, the first study is completed and, and have that reviewed.
Well, it's the same way we do with engineers. We might hire.
Yes.
A developer might hire an engineer, but we have our engineer.
Yep.
Correct.
Yep.
Did, um, did it get communicated that the sound, uh, people that Philip's retained are, are gonna take a look at the Garfield ordinance as opposed to Traverse City's?
I think he, I think he just wrote it wrong. I sent, resent it to him. I think he just wrote Traverse City on that.
Yeah, cause their, their ordinance is, is different in terms of it's got the measurements and everything like that, which ours does not because we don't have.
I sent it to him. I think that he already had it. He just labeled it wrong.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And Phil, I apologize if it seems like I'm coming.
Oh, no, I mean, I don't have any problems either, so.
I, you know, I know previously we had a big group of neighbors here who were really concerned. And, uh, you know, I think it's important for all of us to make sure that we are thorough.
Yep. Um, one thing I didn't, it's not listed in my report, but we will do is we've had previously this, uh, sent this application to the, uh, Grand Traverse County Sheriff Deputy, um, for our community policing officers. We'll, we'll send the security recommendations as well to see if they have any feedback on that as well.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts from the commission?
Ready for a motion?
Uh, sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion that application SPR two thousand twenty-five dash oh six submitted by Philip Beeler for a bar, restaurant, and nightclub on parcel number oh five, oh one, four, oh four, nine, oh eight located at seventeen seventy-six South Airport Avenue be tabled to allow for the applicant to submit the acoustical impact assessment from Robert Anderson Group upon its completion for review by the planning commission. Seventeen seventy-six?
Yeah, but what, you had, use that road, use that street.
South Garfield, uh, not Airport.
So seventeen.
Correction, it's Garfield Road, not Airport Road.
Support.
All right. Motion by August Nelly, support by Robertson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. All right, next on the agenda, new business, item A, PD two thousand twenty-five dash sixty-four, R and W Enterprises, South Airport Road conceptual review.
Uh, so we were approached by, uh, applicants Wayne Kylie and Rob Mead regarding, uh, their proposal uh, to look at a, uh, potential hotel for, uh, that would support the airport and its growth. Uh, this is an area near the, uh, kinda the main entrance to the airport. So it's in the, the southwest corner of Town Line and South Airport Road. That is an area that is currently in our master plan, uh, planned for multifamily, uh, residential. So that there's a small, uh, single family, uh, development to the south there. Basically that area to the north, uh, is all kind of what we had in there is, is, is multifamily. We, when we were approached by them, we thought that, uh, there is some similarities between hotels and apartments. Uh, there are, uh, in, you know, in terms of housing people, it's a little bit different long-term versus short-term. We felt, uh, at least initially that this could be something to be considered by the planning commission. Our concern would be that this would not be, uh, we would try to avoid general commercial in this area. Uh, first of all, if you were to even consider this, I think it is important to reevaluate the master plan. And that would be the first step. But, uh, commercial uses in this area, I think are, are, um, a little tricky, but I think it's possible. But it, we, we try to avoid some of the auto-intensive uses, drive-throughs, that type of thing just because of the potential congestion. That area is already kind of congested with, uh, the Costco as a major destination uh, and combined with the airport, um, particularly in its expansion as we're going, uh, forward with that. So, uh, the, the types of uses here can be complimentary, but I think it's about a matter of finding the right balance. But again, this is just a conceptual review, so there's no action taken tonight. It's an opportunity for the applicants to present and have conversation with the planning commission and get some feedback. So they are present here.
Would you like to step forward and make any comments?
Good evening, uh, ooh, that's pretty loud right there. Uh, members of planning commission, chairman, staff, uh, my name is Wayne Kylie. Uh, this is Rob Mead, my business partner. Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, uh, have this conversation. Um, it's worth noting, uh, at least in my brain, uh, that tomorrow will be, on the tenth of July will, will have been, uh, twenty-two years ago that I put the deposit down on buying the first two properties on South Airport. And it had, uh, some rentals on it. I think there were four rentals, there are a garage out and back. And, and I thought, well, this might be a good long-term investment because I thought it had a lot of business potential, commercial potential. But, uh, I soon became, uh, disenamored with the, being a landlord, uh, the, the property was, uh, substandard and, uh, not complimentary to the area. And so I, within a year, I rased the site, tore it all down and probably left about a million dollars in rents in the last twenty-two years on the table. Cause I still could have rented them, even though I wouldn't have been a proud landlord. So at any rate, uh, we're, we're here in part to find out if that decision twenty-two years ago was a good decision. My wife keeps telling me that was. She says, uh, uh, she didn't wanna sell it because she kept thinking that it still has long-term great potential. Now, this area that we're talking about is in the opportunity zone and, uh, economic opportunity zone. And it was identified as a economically distressed area. And from the time that I got involved twenty-two years ago, it has not gotten better. In fact, I was looking at the article today that came out in the, uh, the business section of the Record Eagle and a nice article about the, the airport and the traffic and, uh, the weekend after, as quoted here, after the, uh, Fourth of July weekend, they had about, uh, eight thousand people go through the airport, approaching eight hundred thousand a year. And, uh, uh, that's a lot of people. And I was talking to, uh, had a meeting with Bob Brick the other day and he was telling me about another award that Traverse City gets, another number one in some fashion. And it is a great destination. But the, the first thing that they see when they drive and they exit the airport is that little derelict house on the corner that, I, I don't see how they've gotten away with it. Uh, if it'd been mine, I think, uh, code enforcement would've come along and said, you gotta tear that down. But at any rate, when you come out of the airport, right on the corner of, of, uh, South Airport and Town Line, there's a little shack of a house that hasn't been occupied in many years. That's the first thing they see when they exit the airport. So, um, in the meantime, uh, Rob and I, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. We've acquired another piece of property which gives us access from, if you might go to the map, uh, Steve.
Yes.
So that we, whatever we do on our site, then we can have egress out on the Town Line Road. Uh, because it's very difficult to make a left turn, um, going west out on the South Airport and, and with the amount of traffic in that intersection. So the thought was just to acquire some properties, giving us access to Town Line Road, which, uh, uh, for either ingress or egress. Obviously ingress is pretty easy if you're going east on South Airport. Uh, but getting out of that site is, is the challenge. So we've, uh, acquired, uh, the, the one property is highlighted with the red, uh, uh, outline. And we have, uh, uh, have two additional properties, uh, in that quadrant under contract. We've reached out and talked to virtually everybody in that area that's, uh, part of the economic zone uh, with I think one exception, uh, that, uh, there's a couple of them we couldn't get a hold of. But we've tried to reach out to everybody and like I said, we've got two of them under contract. So, um, um, we think there's an incredible opportunity today for the planning commission uh, and, uh, to, to make a real difference here. You know, Rob and I are both experienced in, in the business world and development. I used to own a hotel in, in California, small one. Uh, but nevertheless, uh, in, in following up on all the conversations that we've had with the consultants, the people that seem to know what, what goes on in Traverse City, uh, including Kevin Klein. We met with Kevin, uh, chief executive officer of the airport and his assistant, uh, uh, chief financial officer, uh, was it Mark? No, we met with them, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, Kevin, uh, said he thought it was just a great idea. Uh, he, he would like to see it in there, I mean, he would like to see it. And I asked him, I said, can I quote you on that? And he said, sure. So he was enthusiastic. He said, there's a real need for even a conference room where people that are flying in and need to meet somebody, maybe flying back out the same day. Uh, uh, if they had a conference room that they could go meet, uh, uh, off-site, that that would, that would be great. And, and we're told by the consultants that we're talking to that fifty percent of the travelers coming in here are business-related, fifty percent. We're not trying to compete with, uh, the, uh, the East Bay Township Hotels down along the water. That's not what we're all about. We're trying to make, uh, create an opportunity that, that makes it easier for the business people coming in out of town. The people that have driven in from Petoskey or some remote area to catch a flight late at night that can't get, airports canceled the flight, now they got a place to go to. Or if they wanna camp out in, in, in a hotel close to the airport without having to worry about getting there on time in the morning, this would be another ideal situation. So I think this is a once, a once in twenty-two-year opportunity to reinvent that entire area. And so we've done our part and we're just beginning. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rob, please.
Thanks.
Yep.
Hopefully everybody had enough. First of all, I'm Rob Mead. I, I really appreciate the opportunity to come in and speak with you as well. Thanks for the time. I wanna, um, also thank, um, John and Steve for your guidance as we've kinda started this process. As Wayne said, you know, we're excited about the opportunity, not only for the, for a potential hotel in that area, but we do believe there's growth for other services that would be supported by such hotel. You know, the growth, uh, setting records, uh, every year through the airport and the two hundred and fifty million dollar expansion that's coming, we believe there's going to be, need to be support for the, uh, for travelers, both business travelers and, and, um, vacation travelers alike. And we believe a local hotel right there servicing them specifically, not your, um, your typical resort type of hotel, but more of a business-style, one-night, affordable hotel year-round, um, is, is something that the, the travelers are going to need. Um, and we believe that, uh, that along with supporting perhaps things like services, restaurants in the area for them to be able to eat locally would, would also, uh, serve that area well. As Wayne mentioned, I've got a lot of experience in, uh, in retail construction project management, um, you know, with national, national chains. Uh, so we do have that experience behind us. Um, I'm retired. I do live in the area. Moved up here permanently four years ago. However, we've owned a home up here for fourteen years. And, um, we really have taken it upon ourselves to do what we can as citizens to try to help, uh, raise the level even further, um, in the area. And, uh, this is one of the areas that we're, we're, we're targeting. So we think it's a great opportunity. Hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to read the materials that we forwarded to you. And I think at this point, we'd be happy to, uh, as, as I think the meeting is, is meant to be a, a conversation. We're happy to answer questions or, um, or provide more information if you, if you need it.
Questions?
Are you going to build just a hotel or is it gonna expand to a hotel and a restaurant and a bunch of other stuff?
Yeah, I think it's a great question and our intent is to start with a hotel. Um, certainly within the hotel, we'd want some amenities. We believe that, um, there are a lot of folks, um, some of, some of my family even fly in for business meetings and they'd love to have a place to just go and have a conference room. So we believe that that, that would, it would start out with that way. We have, um, there are other properties available in that location that we feel. And in speaking with Mark, uh, or Kevin Klein at the airport, the expansion is gonna include some restaurant there or a couple of restaurant options, but, uh, his feeling is that supportive restaurants in the area would also be, uh, would be acceptable or actually welcomed. And so there is an opportunity, I think, for that type of service as well. We wanna be very cautious, however, about the traffic already. Um, the traffic in the greater Traverse City areas, everybody knows is expanding and we wanna be conscious of that. So we are not necessarily looking for things like automotive, uh, things like that. We really want something that people, like a sit-down style restaurant, people come in and enjoy themselves and, and, and spend time and then maybe stay at the hotel would be our, our target. But whether or not that happens out of the gate, unlikely we'd start with the hotel first.
Thank you.
You bet.
Would this be affiliated with a national chain?
We would like it to be, yeah. We believe business travelers are, are really, uh, that's what they, they typically like to stay at. We would want a national name. And, uh, we've already started talking to some consultants in the area that are associated with, with such, uh, brands. And if you could throw them out there, the Marriott's, the Hilton's, uh, those types of things, we'd like something. Now, some of them have already invested heavily in the area and are already building. Uh, but those are really seen more again as resort-style hotels. They're taking your, your folks that are traveling here to stay for a week or two. Um, our conversations with those types of chains will be more around what we just talked about. This is not the intent of that type of hotel and there really isn't anything in that area that services such customers.
John?
Uh, personally, I think a hotel near the airport is a good idea. I don't yet know whether this is the site that can work for it. There's a lot of residential around there and, um, as you pointed out, it's not the high-rent district of residences, but there's residences, there's some people living there. And we have a obligation to look out for their interests as well. I know in the report, staff was suggesting there need to be some significant buffering. I don't know if, if you guys have some ideas or thoughts about how a hotel can get plunked down among those houses and, and not drive those people crazy?
We, we, we do believe there should be buffer as well. Yeah, the last thing we need to do is, is, is really interrupt, uh, local residents. And so our intent would be to do everything we can to provide that type of buffer, both distance from lot lines, uh, as well as any type of, uh, other buffers, landscaping and whatnot would be the intent to make sure we provide that. And also talk with local, uh, the local folks. We'd want them to be on board with us. We believe that some of the services we're providing would benefit them as well. So we think there are, um, you know, obviously we, we wanna be concerned about it. There, you're, you're correct, there's a, a, a pretty sizable development going on across the street, uh, the other side of Town Road right now, or Town Line Road. Um, there's more multi, multifamily going in there. There's more multifamily going on further east down that road. So that's, that's happening and it's continuing to build. Where we are, um, less so. Uh, there's much more of your, um, we've got, um, we've got a gun, a gun shop there. We've got Cliffs Rifle, we've got, um, a upholstery shop. On our side there, there's a lot more commercial mainly, not much residential other than there's a development right south of these lots, which is primarily mobile home development. And there's a few homes left in the area that we've been trying to reach out to the owners. Most of them we've already talked to.
Are you getting any sense that they're likely to be wanting to sell to you? Or are you gonna have a bunch of residences still in the vicinity?
I can show you, if you don't mind. If I go back to the other, we can show you what we have right now.
The one up here?
Yeah, that's good. So we already own the, inside the red.
Yep.
And then we're under contract with this property here. And we're under contract with this property here at this point. And we have not been, we talked to this person. They are interested in developing something along, they're not sure what they want to do. We talked to them about selling. They want to also get into some sort of a development. They weren't clear on what it was. And we have not been successful. As Wayne mentioned, this location here is an empty building. We don't know. We've tried to reach them and we've tried to reach the other owners in the area, the other, right next door to them. We have not been successful doing that. They're rented out right now. The one unit is rented out. We don't, can't get a hold of the landlord. But everybody else we've talked to. And Wayne is very familiar with the folks west of that land as well. And I don't know if you want to address that with the gun shop owner on 1047?
Oh, yeah. Cliff, I met with Cliff and he's not interested in selling it. Selling, I'll get that away, a little bit too close. He's not really interested in selling unless he were to sell everything and including all the wetlands going back around behind our property over to Town Line. So he's really not a candidate to do anything. You know, the houses that we do have under contract or purchased are, you know, I don't want to be disparaging about something that we're just buying, but they're really, they're not here for the long run. And it's not, it's not, I've never felt that it was a residential housing area. You know, it's one thing to get a hotel room near the airport. You expect to hear airplanes. But when you're living in an apartment building right across the airport, I mean, people do it. But I mean, on the other hand, there's all the noise and the traffic. And it's never made sense for me with all the housing going on all over Traverse City to build multifamily on that site. I've always felt this should be commercial. I think it makes a lot of sense. As far as the neighbors on Holcomb, you know, it's like every other development that I've ever done. What I do is I go out and I literally go door to door and I sit down and I meet with every one of those residents and try to explain what we're doing. Hopefully we can get a lot of their support, probably not all of it by any stretch. But it still comes back to what's best for the area, what's best for the community, what's best for the airport economically, aesthetically. And we're prepared to make a major investment. But we'd kind of like to get some sense of whether we're going to be just shot off the saddle right from the get-go or do we have any basis for encouragement to keep going down the highway? If you know what I'm saying. It's because the properties that we have acquired so far, in my opinion, were overpaying. But we think, well, if there is an opportunity here, because like I said, these houses are teardowns. But if there's an opportunity to take it to a higher level, and obviously whatever we do, we'll work very closely with John and Steve and staff. And obviously, we're going to have to support the planning commission, downboard, everything else. I'm used to that. We're used to it. We're willing to do that, to come up with something between all of us that really makes sense for the area. But it's got to start with an anchor. And we think the best anchor that we can come up with is a hotel. One of the things that we even talked about with all the expansion going on at the airport, there's going to be a real need for housing from all the contractors, subcontractors, people that come in from out of the area. They gotta have a place to stay. Hotel right across the street would be a perfect location for a lot of the tradesmen coming in from out of town. And that was one of the things we talked about with Kevin.
Yeah, and even some of the airport staff today that fly in, layovers and whatnot. And the closest hotel is all the way down on the lakefront. And fairly, you know, they, we've talked with some of those folks. And, you know, very excited about the opportunity, a potential opportunity, having a hotel right across the street. It's walkable distance. So for those passengers that don't want to rent a car right away or can't afford to rent a car right away, or need somewhere to stay, they can walk to the hotel from there. So, and there's a sidewalk available. So a lot of advantages to the actual location in this particular case.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I love the idea of having a hotel there. When we heard about it a couple of weeks ago, I was, great. And I like that you're coming in from Town Line. That showed me that there's a lot of interest in making it work in the community. So if we can figure out a way to do it zoning-wise, I'm, a thumbs up.
Thank you.
I like that.
That's great. Thank you for that feedback.
Karen?
Couple of things. One is not a Garfield Township Planning Commission issue, but I think it's just important to say out loud, which is that I agree having the Town Line, ingress and egress is a good idea. That said, Town Line Road is insufficient already for the volume. And we talk about aesthetics and welcoming guests. That's something I think we all would love to see get upgraded to the powers that be, whoever is listening. That, you know, please continue to let that be at the top of the agenda. The other thing is that with the current zoning of this area, it predates my time on the planning commission. So can you give us a little historical perspective? I agree, I think it's a good fit in that particular spot. I'm just wondering why the future land use is high-density rez rather than something like this, which seems pretty fitting for that site?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know the history behind that in terms of why it was. We were just, you know, kind of going based on what that was planned for in the plan that was done prior to our arrival. So I don't know. It was, it could have been, there is, you know, there is a lot of multifamily going along to that point in East Bay. There's the development that's underway right now. And then there's a substantial development just farther to the east of there. So I think it was about providing some type of transition. You know, there's also single-family. There's Wood Creek, which is in East Bay. And then the George Street, which is to the north of South Airport, just east of the airport, north of South Airport, east of the actual airport, that's single-family. So I think it was about transitioning and knowing that it's a busy corridor and kind of puts a, you know, maybe a stop point to the commercial. So it's not stripped commercial all the way down to Three Mile. So it makes some sense in that regard. So we were just, when we were doing the master plan, kind of thinking in this particular area, okay, knowing that there is some multifamily along there, that this, you know, does make a good transition for that. So I think we changed it. Steve, if you put the.
Yeah.
Future land use. I think we did change it to maybe transition a little bit where we had. So the higher density in the orange and then kind of the gold color to the south of that would be a moderate density. So things that could potentially go in there like duplexes and that type of thing. And then obviously recognizing that really anything to the south there along Town Line is pretty much all wetland. So that's where we kind of did the rural ag designation. So I would just say that if the planning commission is looking to see if they want to work in this, you know, making a change here, would probably prove to reevaluate the master plan first. And with that, as we've done with other areas within the township, that you can think about what are, if you were to look at it differently, you can think about different types of development principles in terms of what would be the types of uses in there? What would be some of the design standards that you would like to see? And that, and that would then help support what zoning decisions you would make after that. So.
Would that have to be commercial to put a hotel on it? Or could it be that local commercial?
No, it would be, it would have to be, local commercial does not allow for hotels. So local commercial tends to be pretty, you know, small, impact, you know, retail, that type of thing. It's really, it's in the CG district where hotels are permitted as a use with special conditions.
So would you think if we would do something like that, we would change the master plan for that whole, that whole block that's orange right there to, for everything?
Well, I would, I would suggest that you not do it for just general commercial. Because I think then you're opening it up to some pretty intensive uses. I think if you're trying to, if part of the goal is to provide uses that are supportive of the airport, but also, you know, as I mentioned, kind of this gateway, you know, I think you want to, you know, at least consider that some commercial uses would be okay there. But the auto-intensive ones, like, you know, your car washes, drive-through restaurants and everything like that, which are permitted in the CG, might not be the most appropriate there. Something like a hotel or whatever, or like they were talking about, you know, a sit-down restaurant might be more appropriate potentially in there. So it kind of, I guess it depends on the character of that commercial. Because straightforward commercial, just like a CG, pretty much allows everything there. And it might be something that you might think of in terms of what is that character of that commercial area in there? It's not very big. I don't, I'm not sure the total acreage in there. So it's not a big area, but it has a potential to have a very big impact because commercial doesn't need a lot of space to have a big impact.
What's the acreage of all the orange areas, Steve?
Uh, let's find out.
John, you looked like you had something more you wanted to say?
Well, I just had a question if the proponents have any idea about what sort of size hotel you're talking about, dimensions, especially height, which is obviously an issue that we've got to live with, deal with.
We are looking at, yeah, we are looking at that now and what type would best serve the public. We did talk to, as Wayne mentioned, Kevin Kline. Their engineers approved, not that they're, they said they were fine from their perspective of a four-story hotel there. And we're just now fitting out, some depends upon the actual layout of the final hotel, whether or not it's going to be four stories or three stories. But somewhere between 90 and 120 rooms is likely what we're looking at.
That's pretty standard for what we've seen with like the Fairfield Inn and the True Hotel. There's kind of a standard out there right now of about three to four stories. And like you said, you know, 100 rooms on average.
To attract the brands that we're talking about, that I think we'd like to see there, that would uplift kind of the feeling in the area, that's where we need to be to go less than that. We would, we'd be forced to go with a lower-level branded hotel. Our preference would be one that travelers understand and like and are used to.
Seems like there's a lot of pretty nice mature trees all around that area. And so if the hotel's not any taller than what you're talking about, there's probably ways that those trees would be of benefit buffer-wise, I think. But there may be gaps to it.
There are some large O Ts, or large trees that would surround that area, for sure.
That would probably be helpful.
We will also, I can also, we did walk it from an environmental perspective. One of our concerns was environmental, just because of everything that's happened in that area with the airport. And we, you know, that's all past already, Phase One has already been, has already happened. We were concerned about wetlands in the area. We've done a wetlands analysis that's also passed. It does fall south of where we're looking at. So those were just some preliminary steps we took so that we could, in case those questions came up, we could answer them.
Steve, what did you get for acreage?
Eleven and two-thirds, about.
How does, am I right, a four-story hotel is on the order of 40 to 50 feet tall?
Maybe Doug can answer those questions.
Doug Ransfield is our consultant, land use consultant.
Steve and John, how does a 40 to 50-foot-tall building fall in line with our building heights?
Quick glance, a lot of them are 35 feet is the max building height. Some don't specify stories. But 35 feet seems to be common in the commercial districts. I've built in CG and CH at least.
Aren't there other hotels putting that fourth floor in the roof or something like, don't they have some kind of?
There's some, also depending on setback, there's like height addition, like if you're further setback, you get like some additional feet in height. So depending on how some of them were designed, they may have been able to fit it in that way. A lot of them, just by the way the traffic flow was set up too, might have some additional setbacks.
When we looked, when we looked at the snapshot you have, which was just a caption from the True Hotel that we did over in South Airport and just took that, plunked it on the site. But contextually, we moved it in to meet the setback allowances to raise it up. And it, and it's important when you look at that little sketch, if that was multifamily, I could do that building in that parking lot in front of you next month. You know? So when we talk about scale and intrusion, and it is to some extent residential, it's people living and sleeping and eating in a building. This is just on a daily basis instead of 30 days, which an apartment would be. But seriously, right down the road, I've got 912 apartments looking in buildings just like that. And so we're not that far a scale. So, but you'll notice there, and even, and Wayne and Robert talked to me about this piece of property and that piece of property. He said, all this stuff is going to be about buffering and contextually creating a neighborhood there, not just a one-off parcel of this and parcel of that. There's got to be integration. And when you say there's only 11 acres, including rightaways and stuff, you got to make the most of that. Because there won't be any more. It's a plat to the south. Extingishing a plat isn't in our lifetime that. We've got conservancy land to the south of that. We did the project across the street. That's only actually like 20 rooms in those, and that was all was able to be built in there. And then there's a really small area of commercial in there, really, really small. And then it goes to wetlands to the south and all the way downtown line. So this, this is going to be where it's going to happen. And I think it's a great, it would be a fun project to work with all these properties at once and see them integrated. And that's what John and I, when Steve talked about it, was kind of an overlay district that could do all that. So, yeah. It's a fun little sketch problem, so. But I do applaud these gentlemen for getting out there and asking the right questions and getting the right people involved as early, so.
Thank you. Steve and John, are there other avenues that would be available to them other than revisiting the master plan and followed by a rezoning of some kind to facilitate this?
Well, I think, I think the, I think there's a lot of different things we can come up with in terms of zoning that will work to get the balance. I'm not too concerned about that. But I would like to have that basis in the master plan, particularly with the, the master plan's pretty, it's new. And it to kind of, you know, go into a different direction, I think, you know. Yeah, I agree, a hotel is basically a short-term rental. And we're planning for long-term rentals there in the master plan. So it's not that far off. But I think it would just be, give us a little bit more comfort in the knowing that that plan really has this a little bit different than. And maybe we should have paid more attention to that when we were evaluating it through the master plan process. But I think once that is, and I don't think it has to be a very difficult or lengthy process to go through. But I think it's, and we can have the conversation, if you're, if you're interested in going this route, we can have, looking at the master plan and then going through that process at the same time, also looking at the zoning and seeing what would work with that. So it doesn't have to be a linear process. It can be somewhat more of a parallel process. That could help to save on time. But I would feel more comfortable, I think, for the benefit of the planning commission and township board to really kind of have a sense of what is the character of that area? Because I think that's really what, what they're talking about is something related to the airport. It's going to, you know, have a certain quality to it. We talk about, I think the walkable connections and so forth are some neat aspects to it that I think that this could really be a nice gateway, a special area. So I think having that kind of thought process in the plan and going forward with any type of the zoning. And specifically in the zoning cases, what we've been looking at, we actually have a draft mixed-use neighborhood district that we're going to be probably talking with you at your study session later this month. Not sure if that's really going to be the one that would fit here because that's going to be more of our kind of local commercial office areas. But there are some things that we've talked about as maybe a different type of mixed-use district. We've also talked about maybe utilizing conditional rezoning process. That's a little clunky, but that would be if you just wanted to do, let's say, a one-off hotel. I think if we get into looking at this, you know, nearly 12 acres of land here, we can look at some, you know, some options in the zoning that would make it. I mean, we, we don't want to do anything. I mean, we've, we don't want to do anything like a PUD or anything like that. Those are something we're trying to move away from. And really, if there's a good plan in place, that gives you a lot more zoning options than just going down something like a PUD or something like that.
Molly?
I think we need to look at the whole area there. They're acquiring more properties. So there are probably going to be other things that are ancillary to the airport. And so when we're revisiting that, let's think about the whole piece and, and things that, that airport's not going anywhere. And, you know, it's, and it's getting bigger all the time, so let's plan for that.
Yeah, I think that's, and that's why I would feel that if we have that understanding, that's what the, if we were to revisit the master plan, it would just give us a good, strong basis to say, okay, then we can look at all the options related to zoning for all the different types of uses that would fit for that area.
Right, and it would align with kind of what was already done with the master plan for some of the other areas. We looked at like the mixed-use areas and some of them were given designations of mixed-use center, mixed-use neighborhood. And we even talked about how like, something like the CH District along Thirty-One, maybe that evolves someday into a mixed-use corridor. It could be somewhere in between some of those, so it may not be one we exactly were anticipating. But knowing that like there's anticipated changes here, we already anticipated that in the master plan, like it's not a plat, it's not a, it's just some existing single family, that we anticipated some type of change. But so, sort of evaluating, does it make sense to have something a little bit in the middle? And it sort of creates a catalyst to start implementing something out of the master plan. Like the mixed-use center, we thought that might be the Cherryland Center or Grand Travis Mall. That still might be, but this might be able to take attack on a different part of implementing the master plan as well. But you would imagine like doing, we did a section for each of those mixed-use areas. This would be adding a section to that and kind of taking a deeper dive into what is this area about and how does that fit?
I, I think it's a fair, fair assertion that, you know, we did spend a little bit of time looking at this, but we have a landowner and developer who has a little bit more vision than frankly I think we had when we were working on the master plan last year. And, and, you know, I think taking another look at this certainly warranted. I like the idea of the hotel for the reasons that everybody else has stated. My only reservation is if we're, if ultimately we're just looking at this development, it's not too appealing, I feel, as being in conflict with the other land that remains. And if, and if you can somehow bring, you know, a much larger development to us that more cohesively integrates kind of all the stuff we're talking about, I think that's really, would be really great and would help, help with the process. Because the process that you're looking at is not so much us saying, we don't really, it, it's how can you get through the zoning process, master plan process, to make this a reality and bring all the neighbors as you're already speaking to them, but bring all of them along too in support of what you're doing. But I'm, I'm supportive of the direction you're going in. I'm anxious about the process.
And that sort of gets to the advantage of looking at a master plan amendment first and then a zoning. We're looking at the master plan of that whole area and would ultimately look at rezoning probably that whole area or at least the vision that it would be rezoned at some point of that whole specific area in orange. Whereas like a conditional rezoning would be for that piece. And it would be clunky because it would look at just theirs, so. Taking the more holistic view of the details of all of this, sort of brings that advantage. And if they're already reaching out to some of the neighbors, like they're already aware of like, okay, those changes are potentially afoot. So it makes sense to look at it.
And it doesn't have to be necessarily a multifamily residential versus commercial. We can mix those together. So in other words, you could still allow for apartments being located in that area. That's, that's, that's the kind of conversation when we look at that, you know, eleven and a half acres that we can look at the different uses that we think could fit there. So it, it allows some greater flexibility. It still allows for potentially the uses that were originally, that are currently planned there to still be established on that area, so.
Any other comments from commissioners? Molly?
Yeah, so if we redo, I want us to be careful about those uses and make sure that they, I mean, to me, we're redoing all of this because the airport's there and we recognize the need for some services for the airport. So probably don't need a car wash there, probably don't need, I mean, there are several things that we might fit into our commercial that we're probably not going to put there.
Exactly.
So when we come up with our list of uses, let's make sure that they're all kind of cohesive. And you guys probably wouldn't like that next door either.
That's right.
Yeah, I think this has a, I think that's, we're part, when those, in the master plan discussion, you can talk about the character of that area. Because we have those services already available down on Garfield and near Cherryland, whether, you know, you, you need to, you know, go stop at Burger King or go get your car washed, it's all right there. This, I think, has like, they mentioned to us about, you know, kind of a gateway. So it creates not just a way to help the service of the people using the airport, but just that image. You know, the airport is a beautiful airport. When you arrive, you know, the wood, the woodiness of it, you know, you, you drive in and, and it's not like a lot of airports that you see around the country that tend to be more industrial areas. I mean, we have some industrial here, but it, for the most part, it doesn't give you that, it gives you kind of a unique feel. And I think that character of what the airport is doing is something that could be carried on over here as well.
Gentlemen, have anything more you'd like to add?
Well, I just, one final comment. When, when we first had a meeting with John and Steve and we went in with our site plan and, and we were, we were pleased because they, they seemed, I mean, we thought we might get thrown out the door, but they were very gracious and, and creative and thinking. And they said, well, you know, if you were to do something like this, it'd be great to have access to Town Line Road. So we said, well, give us a month, and we went out and acquired access to Town Line Road and came back with revised plan. And, and since then, we've got, got two more that will close in the next week. So like I said, our commitment and, and investment there is big time. And, and that's, and that's why it's real important that we have a roadmap that we can rely on somewhat. So I guess my question would be, chicken and egg, what would, what would be the next step for all of us to go on this if?
Well, I think, I think it would be having, well, we, we could probably provide a little bit of a roadmap. I know going through and doing a master plan amendment and then going into doing zoning, if we were to do that as a linear approach, it's kind of difficult. I think we can kind of almost mix them together a little bit. But I would provide, I think, that roadmap to the Planning Commission for their study section, study session.
In a couple of weeks.
A couple of weeks and say, this is what we would say would be the, the process that we would follow. And we can, you know, certainly can, can share some of that information with you so you have an understanding of that. And that, I think initially would be focused on the master plan and the character of that area. But at, you know, I think we can start that process, but then shortly thereafter, start looking at zoning options too. Once we kind of, I don't think it's going to be too hard for the Planning Commission because this is a pretty concise area. Like you said, it's almost has its like natural and physical growth boundaries essentially in that, in place. So, and we know the focus tends to be its relationship to the airport. So it's, we're already kind of talking about the character defined. I, I don't think it'll be that hard, but I think it would be, once that conversation is, then we can segue into the zoning and, and looking at different zoning options. But I would like to at least provide kind of a roadmap for the Planning Commission to look at. And like I said, maybe we could start that as early as the study session, which would be appropriate.
And let us know what we can do to facilitate the process. First of all, I want to thank all of you. We appreciate the receptive nature and spirit of, of the dialogue that we've had here this evening. It's important and I think it's encouraging and reassuring. So thank you very much and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. All right, with that, that's all of our new business tonight. And we'll move on to item number eight, public comment.
Hi, Hayden Northrup, Eight Eight Nine Meadow Drive. I take issue with some of the talk about applying the sound ordinance strictly to individuals. I urge you to reframe your thinking about that. You would never say in a subdivision, well, don't build any more houses in the subdivision because my neighbors might decide to be loud in the middle of the night. So, you know, that, that's an issue maybe for like an officer. This is the wrong time and place, the wrong tool. Apply it all you want to buildings, but at some point you start talking about it like it's a curfew.
Thank you. Seeing no more public, we'll move on from public comment to other business. And we have item A, consideration of October meeting schedule change.
Yeah, so the, your study session is in October, is October twenty-second. And that's actually the same time as the Michigan Association of Planning Annual Conference, which typically both Steve and I attend. Fortunately, there is a fifth Wednesday in October, the twenty-ninth. So we were just wondering if it's possible that we could just change that date from the twenty-second of October to the twenty-ninth of October. And that would allow us to attend the conference, helps us get our continuing education requirements and so forth. If that's okay, probably would be appropriate to maybe just make a motion to that effect and then we can get that notified.
Make a motion, we change the meeting from the twenty-second to the twenty-ninth?
Support.
Motion by Fudge, support by Klein. Is there any discussion? And I would only add, did we not cancel that meeting in twenty-twenty-four?
Usually it's November and December we don't have.
Usually, but there was a conflict this last?
I don't know if it was last year, maybe it was the year before. We did that recently. In some year, there may not have been a fifth Wednesday, depending on how it shook out. But because we have it available this time, it works out a little better.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that, I, I don't have a problem with it. So, hearing, oh, go ahead.
I just want to add too, you know, you have educational funds available to you as Planning Commissioner. So if there are people that want to attend that same conference, it's, it can be in Kalamazoo that, end of that week. So let us know if you're interested in telling, attending. There are a lot of appointed planners like yourself that go to that conference.
Sessions designed for Planning Commissioners specifically as well, so.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same? Motion passes. All right, items for next agenda. You guys want to just maybe walk us through it?
Yeah, the CIP will just give you an update. The CIP Committee continues to meet and doing that.
It's met yesterday, right?
Yep, doing that draft. The South Airport Road Corridor Plan Concept, I'd mentioned to the board yesterday evening that I'll be in front of them on July twenty-second to present on that. I'll, before the hand, I'll have a conversation with the road commission manager, just to kind of get some feedback. We'll do an overview of the zoning atlas meeting open house that Steve and I attended last month. And then mixed-use zoning districts, we'll probably expand that a little bit to also be looking at the subject area that we just had conversation on, on South Airport. But we wanted to at least introduce to you the mixed-use neighborhood district that we drafted. We can see its application, that application for that type of mixed-use neighborhood zoning district is going to be in our areas like Veterans Drive, West Front Street, Green Hill with the intersection of Zimmerman and Silver Lake. So not a lot of intensive commercial, but more kind of office, low-impact retail, multifamily. We actually met with some owners on Veterans Drive this week that are looking at making some zoning changes. And we thought this actually, what they're looking at doing might actually fit very well with this draft mixed-use zoning district that we're putting together. So it would be a good time to review that and kind of get your feedback on that. I will, will also add in, like I mentioned, kind of a timeline to how evaluate and consider that South Airport Town Line area.
So you're suggesting that the, the roadmap that was discussed previously relative to the conceptual review would be incorporated into item D, mixed-use zoning district discussion?
Yeah, we'll probably add on, probably add to that.
Okay. John?
When we get to talking some more about this area around the airport, is there a, a airport master plan?
There is.
Could we get a copy of?
Sure.
That and, and be made aware, because you've filled us in pretty much on what's going on in East Bay. And we're the Southwest, so I'd be kind of interested to know what's north. Is it, is everything to the north within the airport master plan, do you think, or is there other?
Yes.
It's all airport property, yeah.
Yeah, including the Costco, that's all airport property.
At least the Costco, yeah.
And just as I kind of mentioned, the addition, the expansion that's going to be going underway is, so there's basically five gates there now. There's going to be an additional five gates and that's going to be, the addition is going to go to the east. So if you're kind of entering into the current terminal, it's going to kind of go to the east. That's the next phase. And then beyond that is another five gates. So the plan ultimately is to have fifteen gates located there. So they are also looking at alternative, additional parking areas. So it's, it's substantial changes. I, I think one of the interesting things, actually earlier today, I actually did a tour. Kevin Kline, as a member of the zoning, the Joint Zoning Commission that were writing the zoning ordinance for the airspace. Walking through there, you get a real sense of how busy it is there. So right now, a lot of the travelers that are there for the summer season are more of the visitors or what we typically have seen as visitors. It changes in the winter months. That's when we have more of the locals, so that's where they had the, you know, parking issues back in January, February. So a lot of snowbirds, people, so that's where it, it kind of changes. And, but it, when you see what they've experienced just in this past weekend where they had their busiest days and some of the pictures that they show of the, it's, it's really crowded in there. And so, but there is a document that kind of speaks to that expansion, plans that they have for the next few years.
I think I knew they were going to expand the airport gates and, and parking. I'm really curious to know what, if anything else, if I mean the Costco came out of nowhere and there's other land there, if they got in mind of putting up another hotel, for example, it'd be kind of nice for us to know what somebody's planning to do north of South Airport before we figure out.
Yeah, how far west?
South or something.
How far west do they go?
You mean east?
No, I mean west of the airport, out on airport.
So that's where the, there's this, so the Joint Zoning Commission that I'm on now is writing the ordinance for kind of the airspace around the ten-mile area. But then I'm also on the zoning board that, for is actually the airport property. So most of, most of the airport property is all related to airport functions. There's only certain areas that are owned by the airport that are non-airport. So where the Costco is at in the Judson Court is roughly about sixty acres, I believe. And I think Costco takes, it might be less, maybe it's a forty-acre area. Because I think Costco is about twelve acres. That area right there is basically, allows for kind of non-air, you know, aerospace type of uses. There are some areas along Hastings Street, so kind of that's in the city. Up along in that area, I think they have some properties along there that are airport, but again, not, you know, typical airplane and jet type of operations. And then I think the property that they have is actually in the city, but is actually leased to Sarah Automotive. There's not a lot. There's only those kind of pockets. Everything that you see kind of where the Everything that you see, kind of where the terminal is at and the parking lot and all that is all part of active airport operations and that area, those areas will not be leased out or used for other, you know, non-airport uses. So that's something I can also share with you, the kind of the zoning map that they have. So they actually have a zoning ordinance, master plan, just, just like we do. So those are things we can share.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Well, if there's something else, I think we're adjourned for a couple of weeks.
Motion we adjourn.
Thanks, Bob.